At 7:07 PM, per the Governor's Executive Order 21-110, masks must be worn. And I must say, it is so wonderful to see so many people here tonight. This is a special night for all of us. So the first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to say for the record that Mr. Fiorello, Mr. Devonica, and Ms. Smith are not able to attend tonight. So you have the mighty foursome here tonight. The next item on the agenda is approval of agenda. Motion by Mrs. Rogowski?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The ayes have it, four to zero. The next item on the agenda is the Student Government Report. You can come up to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Rachel Walmsley, and I am a senior and the publicity coordinator for the CHS Student Government.
Hi, I'm Katie Galgay, I'm a junior and the secretary for the CHS Student Government.
Today, we're here to update you on our super exciting projects. Recently, we finished our fill-a-truck event for the Cumberland Happy Baskets. We are so grateful to everyone who donated as we were able to fill the truck and multiple cars. The town of Cumberland did a fantastic job, and we hope everyone had a happy Thanksgiving.
Also, Student Government is going to be organizing an adoptive family for Cumberland families in need. We will be shopping for several families, and we are excited to continue with charity events like this throughout the year and bring smiles to those in need. Student Government will be having a holiday party and scavenger hunt when we purchase and wrap all the gifts together.
Finally, we would like to thank our administration and all those who assisted Student Government in our Thank the Teacher posters. Students were able to express something they are thankful for about each teacher, and yesterday, we thanked our administration with coffee and donuts for all they do for us. To those who work in the school system at Cumberland, we are extremely grateful and can never thank you all enough.
We are looking forward to our relaxing winter vacation ahead and wish everyone a happy holiday.
Thank you, Student Government. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda, which includes: Approval of minutes from the regular meeting, 11:18, 2021; the special meeting, 11:30, 2021; Approval of minutes from the Executive Session, 11:18, 2021; The Enrollment Report, 12:01, 2021; The School Police Report, 11:01, 2021; The School Bus Inspection Reports, 12:01, 2021; And the Residency Tourency Report, 12:01, 2021. Motion by Mrs. Rogowski?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The ayes have it, four to zero. The next item on the agenda is Personnel Announcements, Mrs. Dunkinson.
Good evening, everyone. I have a few items for you tonight. First is the appointment of Pamela Storm, effective January 3, 2022, as Assistant Principal at McCourt Middle School. I don't think, is Pamela here tonight? No, she's not here. Second is the unpaid leave, personal leave of absence of Kathleen Harold, one-to-one paraprofessional at Cumberland High School, effective November 29. We have two retirements for approval tonight, both having served Cumberland schools for 32 years. First is Stephen Georgie, effective March 1, 2022, and second is Deb Rood, effective January 6, 2022. We appreciate their service to Cumberland. We have a resignation tonight. We have a resignation tonight of Todd Thompson, effective December 22, 2021, Grade III at Cumberland Hill. We wish him well. And finally, coaching appointments, there are a list of them, so I will get going. All effective, effective November 30, 2021, is Mark Androsi, Hockey Varsity; Jacob Borja, Indoor Track and Field Assistant; Tyler Calabro, Basketball Boys Junior Varsity; Carrie Carpenter, Indoor Track and Field Assistant; Richard Gaudreau, Indoor Track and Field Assistant; Stephen Gorman, Wrestling Assistant; Owen Keenan, Basketball Girls Varsity; Joshua Lima, Indoor Track and Field Head Coach; Rodrick McGary, Swimming Boys and Girls; Jonathan Paquin, Hockey Assistant; Michael Pariso, Basketball Freshman; Rachel Powell, Cheerleading; Gary Reedy, Basketball Boys Varsity; Colin Smith, Wrestling Varsity; Jaclyn Xavier, Indoor Track and Field Assistant, effective December 1, 2021; Christopher LeBlanc, Basketball Girls University; and effective December 6, 2021; Sean Barlow, Basketball Boys McCourt; Janine Boisel, Basketball Girls McCourt; Brendan Collins, Basketball Girls North Cumberland Middle School; Jared Dean, Wrestling North Cumberland Middle School; Taylor Dugan, Wrestling McCourt; and finally, John Madden, Basketball Boys North Cumberland Middle School. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up on the agenda is Report Out of Executive Session Meeting on 12/9/2021. Item 1, Report Out of Executive Session Votes. We did not take any votes in our meeting tonight. And the next item is a Vote to Seal Minutes of the Executive Session. Motion to Seal by Mrs. Rogowski?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The ayes have it, four to zero, thank you. The next item on the agenda is the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Thornton.
Good evening, Madam Chair and School Committee. We have a recognition tonight for a retirement, Rose Texera, 35 years. Please come on up, Rose. Now, Rose, you must stay right here while I call up your BF Norton principal. And before you get your bag, we're going to have her say a few things about you.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Merriam-Webster defines dedication as a feeling of very strong support for or loyalty to someone or something, the quality or state of being dedicated to a person, group, cause, et cetera. For the past 35 years, Rose Texera has truly dedicated herself to the Cumberland School District. Her career started as a teacher's assistant, and for 10 years, she worked at numerous schools, including McCourt Middle School, Cumberland Hill Annex, St. Patrick's, and finally BF Norton. In December of 1999, when her good friend Alex Alice retired, Rose happily took the secretary position, and since that time, she has been the right-hand woman to seven principals. In preparation for tonight, I asked staff members to share thoughts with me. There was one in particular beautiful response that I thought was the perfect description of Rose. Rose has an old-fashioned charm and thoughtfulness that is unforgettable. She never misses an opportunity to connect with people. She celebrates, she has joys, and offers healing words with ease. When you speak to her, you get the feeling that she recognizes the sacredness of human connection and will nurture that connection no matter what life throws at her. Other words or phrases used to describe Rose and found in multiple responses were: Warm, kind, treats all the students with respect and love, truly cares about the staff, hard-working, sends lovely handwritten notes, delicious baked treats, she's sweet and impossible to replace. Rose, I'm not sure how I'm going to manage without you, even though you keep telling me you're only a phone call away. You always seem to know what I'm looking for and locate it within minutes. You stay calm even in stressful situations. We frequently say that no matter the situation, any announcement over the intercom by Rose is always pleasant and soothing. During the past 20 years, we have all been, oh, 20 years, 20 months, it feels like 20 years, Rose. We have all been challenged in ways we've never known before. You have been there for all of us every step of the way. In the words of Steve Jobs, "Your work is going to fill a large part of your life, and the only way to truly be satisfied is to do what you believe is great work. And the only way to do great work is to love what you do. If you hadn't found it yet, keep looking and don't settle. As with all matters of the heart, you'll know when you find it." Rose, 35 years ago, you found your calling, and it is so apparent that you truly love your job. You've touched so many lives along the way. Thank you, relax and enjoy.
Okay, thank you. And next up, it's my pleasure to announce the newly appointed Director of Cumberland School Volunteer Services, Roxanne Hyken is here tonight. And also, to introduce her is Stephanie Zerba, please come on up.
Good evening, my name is Stephanie Zerba, and I am a board member of the Cumberland School Volunteers. I am here tonight to introduce our new director, Roxanne Hyken. Roxanne is a graduate of Cumberland High School. She holds a Masters of Arts in Psychology from Rhode Island College. Roxanne resides in Cumberland with her husband and two children. She has been volunteering in our school system since 2013. She is a member of the North Cumberland Middle School Improvement Team. The Cumberland School Volunteers is very excited to have Roxanne as our new director. This past Halloween, Roxanne successfully handed out 350 books to children of all ages at Diamond Hill Park and is currently working to bring back our RIF programs to elementary schools. Cumberland School Volunteers is excited to have her, and we look forward to having many more Cumberland School Volunteer opportunities with our elementaries. Roxanne.
Hi, I am Roxanne Hyken, and I am honored to have been selected to be the new director of the Cumberland School Volunteers. I hope I am able to fill the shoes of my predecessors, Mary Ann Roll and Kristen Cicatos. Although things look a little bit different due to the pandemic, the organization is committed to serving the children of Cumberland. As a resident of Cumberland, I have been a volunteer in a number of ways. I believe volunteering brings people closer together and strengthens our community. It is a rewarding environment that I'm very proud to be a part of. Thank you.
And now, if I could call up our newly minted AD, Mr. Crowley, we have several athletes to honor this evening, Mr. Crowley?
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Winter sports is off and running at both the high and the middle schools, but before we get to that, we have some accolades we'd like to share from our fall athletic teams. It was great competition on all levels, but we did have some champions that we would like to recognize as well. The first champions we're going to recognize, the Rhode Island Scholastic League does a unified program where they pair partners with athletes. It's one of the best things, if you've never been to a sporting event, that you need to see, because these kids work very, very hard, they get great coaching, and it's just a joy to watch them play. So, our first champions tonight, state champions, they won the championship at LaSalle Academy on a Saturday afternoon in a very exciting match, along with their coaches, Timmy Lemieux, Sue Turner, and Karen Scurry. Let's bring on our Unified Volleyball team.
Yeah. Come on, Malachi, get out here. I don't have my phone. I didn't bring my phone. Come out front here.
Great job, Unified Volleyball. All right, our next team that we recognize in a very exciting and historic season, they won their state title on a Chille United Cranston Stadium, on a penalty corner late, on a laser from Sophie Zeniti. Let's bring out the varsity field hockey team, state champions. Their coach, Erin Gendrow, could not be here this evening, she is attending to practice for high school basketball. Actually, talk about the well-roundedness, Sophie Zeniti is now heading over to the the Winter Festival, or whatever it is, and it's going on in the auditorium, where she will participate as a member of the band, so. Well-rounded, Sophie, good job. Our next team, we're going to bring their coaches out, defended their title on a clean, crisp day at Bryant University, where the middle school state championships are held. It's been quite a few years running now, they would know better than I would. But both former Cumberland students, although one did go to another school at one point in time, but we'll let that go. But their coaches are here, Audrey O'Neil and Caitlin Moreno. No, that's okay, that's okay. Congratulations, great job with the boys and the girls as well. We did have three individual state champions. Two of them are not here because they're running Junior Nationals, JO, Junior Olympics down in Kentucky, so they're not here this evening, but we would be remiss if we didn't recognize them, but we do have one of our individual champions here. First is our freshman state champion, who is not here this evening, Kylie Defusco, was sixth overall, was freshman state champion, made first-team All-State as a freshman, finished sixth, great freshman year for Kylie. Our eighth-grade middle school champion won a brilliant race on that same day of Bryant that the boys won. First mile, she was kind of nip and tuck, and then after that, she kind of took off as an eighth grader. We're excited about her future, Charlie McHugh is our eighth-grade champion. I mentioned Kylie as our freshman champion. And our one champion here tonight had a great year for the, us, the cross-country team, was battling some injuries early on, and cross-country is a sport where it's about true perseverance and personal growth. And this young lady grew more than anybody. She was in a dogfight for the first about mile and a quarter out of Ponte Gansett during the JV states, and then she hammered the wood trail, really took to the hills and just kind of put the race away in a brilliant time in her PR. Grace Belt, our JV state champion, come on up, Grace. And I do have one more recognition that came in late this afternoon, but they're not here, so I'm just going to announce it. I got an email from the RITCA, the Rhode Island Track Coaches Association, which all the coaches vote on Coaches of the Year, and our boys' cross-country coach, Carrie Carpenter, was named Coach of the Year for the State of Rhode Island for Cross-Country this fall season. So, congrats to Coach Carpenter.
Okay, Madam Chair, now it's time for the main event of the evening. We have the RICAS test score analysis. So, Mr. Devonica and his team are ready to take it away? So, Mr. Devonica?
Mr. Devonica, do we have this presentation in the drive?
Not yet, right, Mike?
Okay.
No, it's not in the drive yet. All set? All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the committee, and Superintendent Thornton. I'm joined this evening, as I have been for the past six years, by two of my dear colleagues, Kathy Cardoza, Math and Science Curriculum Coordinator, and Deb Rood, ELA and Social Studies Coordinator. Each year, now in year seven, we provide an analysis of our performance on standardized state testing for both ELA and mathematics. In 2014, when I was appointed to this position, we set out to create a top-level academic system for our students. One way we can measure the efficacy of our academic programs and product is via RICAS testing for grades 3 through 8. We all know the story, Cumberland rose in the rankings, growing from a mediocre school system, perhaps even underperforming, to a top-performing public model in the state. When the pandemic struck, it forced us to pivot our practices, and as a result, the main constructs of our academic model were challenged. The very premise of our gains were based on foundational frameworks of strong and plentiful internal professional development practices, a strict focus on pedagogy, direct instruction, and a cyclical process for curricular and assessment revision. There are no excuses for the results you will see this evening. You will not hear any of us making excuses. However, there are several variables that contributed to the data you will see shortly. Variables such as having over 600 students in distance learning for an entire year. We were one of the last districts to return to hybrid and full-in-person in the state. We returned in March, just before the testing window opened in April. Lastly, our PD time with our teachers plummeted from over 300 hours each year to a mere fraction of that time. As a result, we now have a new baseline to work from. The story this evening for the committee is one of resolve and a commitment to get back to where we were. Our academic model certainly waned under the stormy conditions of the pandemic, but the levy did not break. As a collective unit, the building administrators and teachers are conscientious professionals. Together, we will do more of the things that got us to our pinnacle pre-pandemic. The educators that helped us raise student performance to the highest levels Cumberland has seen in the modern testing era will help us do it again. We will maintain high expectations, and we will keep a laser-like focus as we have for the past seven years. Research clearly outlines fundamentals, not fads. Lots of reading and math, strong pedagogy coupled with tiered support systems that can help us continue to pursue grade-level proficiency for all of our students. Cumberland is fortunate because we can check all of those boxes. We just need time with our students. Federal grant funding has helped us strategically make some new hires that will fortify our system for closing learning gaps. I do want to reiterate that we are not being reactionary. All of the academic decisions for gap closures were made well in advance. Our predictions helped us plan a response back in March and April of last year, and the decisions we made then primarily remain to this day. I would caution the committee that we must find ways over the next three years to retain many of those positions that we added. We will become systemically dependent upon these positions playing a major role in our growth trajectory moving forward. Rest assured, the school system is in good hands, our administrators are highly skilled, we have top-notch teachers with a student-centered mindset. This setback is an opportunity to enhance and further strengthen our academic programs. There are lessons to be learned in times of difficulty and hardship. Our job is to pay attention to those lessons and simply do something about it. And with that, I'm going to begin the presentation. So, in addition to Kathy and Deb, other members of our team, Bethany, Lindy, Shannon, and Melissa round out the Assistant Superintendent's office. And we set this as our purpose and our why a few years back, and it continues to be our purpose. We are here to pursue proficiency for all Cumberland students. Every year, we provide you with the reminder of what the RICAS scale is. It ranges from 440 scale score points to 560. 500 is the cut score for proficiency in meeting expectations. And so...
This slide shows Cumberland's ranking in relationship to the other districts who performed better than we did. On this slide, to orient you, you'll see the first column is the ranking, the district, students on free and reduced lunch, which represent poverty, proficiency, and population tested, which matters. Cumberland, as 11th, is very close in ranking to Narragansett, Portsmouth, and a dead heat with South Kingstown. Smithfield scored two points higher than Cumberland. And what's most interesting about that is since we test the most students of the 11 districts listed, Cumberland would have needed 40 more students to achieve proficiency, to achieve 54% and to tie with Smithfield. So, testing population size does matter, which Tony will talk about a few further ahead. So, for those of you that have not seen this slide before, this gives us a historical perspective of where we started in 2015, at the bottom, 17th, and our growth over years. So, from 2015 to 2019, you can see we ranked 4th in 2018 in a dead heat with East Greenwich, and 5th in 2019 with less than a point, tying North Smithfield and Cumberland. And we dropped to 11th. So, the question our team asked ourselves is what could be responsible for this? What we do know is we have excellent educators who achieved great things with their students in previous years. That hasn't changed. The curriculum hasn't changed, the pedagogy hasn't changed. So, what are two things we thought, there might be more than two, but two things that really impacted us in the pandemic? One is the return to school. Barrington, as we know, returned immediately. Students were in school five days a week. Another variable that may have contributed to this is technology. Some districts had smart boards, which made it much easier for streaming or for DL. Luckily, Cumberland is very wise in making sure with the SRR $3 that technology, smart boards will be purchased for the district. Oh, okay, so this just is a representation of where we began, where we grew to. Oh, okay, so this just is a representation of where we began, where we grew to, and where we currently are.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to share the same information, the same slides, except for math. So the first slide, similar to ELA, shows a ranking of the districts for the current, I'm sorry, the testing year 2020. And you can see that Cumberland ranked sixth. This is among the public school districts. Again, the same information, the ranking, the district, the poverty level proficiency and population tested. 41% was a drop of 14 percentage points from the last time that we tested in 2019. We know that there was a bigger drop in math than ELA, not only in the state of Rhode Island, but also in the state of Massachusetts. The next slide, like the ELA slide, shows the historic data from 2015. How 2015, 16, and 17 were eighth and ninth, then we had a big climb in 2018 with third in the state in 2019, and 2021, sixth. And the three districts that outperformed us this year are North Kingstown, Little Compton, and East Greenwich. Little Compton stayed the same as they did in 2019. North Kingstown lost six percentage points, and East Greenwich lost 10 percentage points. And like I said, in math, Cumberland dropped 14 percentage points. So again, this shows historically how we rose from 37 to 48 to 55, and this year, again, we dropped 14 percentage points. The state of Rhode Island dropped, on average, 10 percentage points in math, and the state of Massachusetts dropped 16 percentage points in math. So Massachusetts had less, Rhode Island had less of a drop than Massachusetts.
Thank you. Members of the committee, I did share the presentation with you, so if you want to look at it in front of you, you may do so. So we always ask ourselves questions when we get these results, and it nearly always boils down to these three questions. Do we understand the results? How do we continue to improve our outcomes? And what are some concrete takeaways from the data so that we can build a response around that?
So if those of you, once again, who have been to our presentations, we had quite a robust response in previous years as to what our plan was going to be. We still have a plan. The challenges this year are being able to have teachers pulled out of the classrooms for PD. Teachers are stressed. Principals are stressed because there are very few subs. So our plan is kind of bare bones, but it is something that we know that we can achieve through funding of the SRR $3 and also through the work that we're doing. In the elementary school response, we are planning and implementing the new ELA curriculum, grades three, five. Currently this year, I'm working with grades three and four to systematically map out the curriculum, the assessments, and rubrics. Implementation for three and four will be next year. Grade five will start that process next year, where we will plan and then implement the following year. We have had and continue to have two school-based coaches, and they're working with Bethany Silva, because Bethany is quite knowledgeable in our approach to writing SRSD, and she is working with those academic coaches to be able to influence practices at those two schools.
Hi. Also in the plan, using SRR funding, we're adding an additional math interventionist, which will be half-time at Cumberland Hill and half-time at Community, and that's a response to the data from RICAS. We also, this is Shannon Baset's second year as a math coach. Shannon's really looking at the data, making data-driven decisions. She's working with teachers that have changed grades, teachers that are new in the system. She works at all of the elementary schools, so she goes where she's needed. She works at the elementary and the middle school levels. Also, we are the MLL interventionist. There's going to be an additional MLL interventionist at BF Norton, and then, oh, Amacore, sorry, there's two. That's the middle school, but yes, one at BF Norton, one at McQuarrie. We also purchased a new platform called Equip. Equip is a Great Minds product, which is our publishes Eureka Math, which is our curriculum right now, K-8. It's an adaptive diagnostic assessment, and it helps teachers to, before they begin a new module, to find where the gaps are in learning, so they can provide that instruction. We call it just-in-time learning, so that we can continue with grade-level standards. They know exactly what prerequisite skills they're missing, and then it comes with a suite of digital resources that help them to address the gaps. And that includes explicit teaching, as well as things like instructional videos, things like that. Also, I don't know if we put it up here, but as Deb mentioned, one of the issues this year is providing professional development, working with those teachers, implementing new curriculum because of subs. So I know in the SRR funding also, and this is a response to the testing, we're hiring building subs, so that when we want to have professional development with teachers, they're able to attend because there's coverage for their classes.
Middle school responses include implementing a new ELA curriculum. Bethany will be doing that work beginning next year, and the year after that, assessment framework will be developed and then implemented the following year. Social studies will work to identify a curriculum the end of this year and follow the same timeframe for ELA. The Essential Tier Two model has been funded through SRR II and SRR III. It is now complete in terms of funding, and that will be able to be implemented for two to three years.
Okay, so also, the Essentials model includes math and ELA. There's funding for three math Essentials teachers and three ELA at each school. Right now, we only have two of the math. The funding is there, but we're not able to hire the staff at this time. But that resource that I talked about earlier, the Equip, is being used at the middle school level for these Essentials courses. So the students that go to Essentials, it's a second math class, the teachers there are doing diagnostic assessing to find out if there are any gaps or prerequisite skills. They're also reteaching and pre-teaching skills that they're learning in class, and they're finding a lot of success with that model. So we'll be happy when we have a third teacher, one at each grade level. And also, we're adopting, we're in the process of selecting, and we will be adopting a new high-quality math curriculum for the middle school level. We have a team with teachers from both middle schools. Shannon's part of the team. We're meeting with publishers. We've gone on school visits, and we'll be working throughout this year, selecting which program we'll be implementing. And yeah, Equip I already talked about, so I think that's it.
Okay, so each year, we provide some comparative analysis data with some local Massachusetts districts, and we also provide a more widespread dataset for the purposes of this evening and time. Going to show you some data for some more local Massachusetts districts. Dr. Thornton, for our strategic plan that we're working on, that's on the horizon. He wanted a more global goal on the strategic plan that we'll be talking about, and one of those goals he was in relation to wanting to understand our performance in relation to Massachusetts districts. So we did a larger analysis. It is on the presentation, but those slides are hidden. So for those of you who have it, you will be able to access it, okay? So our performance is at the top. We were 51.5% in ELA, 41 in math, as both Deb and Kathy shared. Then you see the districts on the left, Plainville, Bellingham, Foxborough, and so on and so forth. Anything that's highlighted are districts who are, performed us. And obviously, the opposite is true. Anything that's not highlighted means that we were outperforming those districts. So you can see, we're still, generally speaking, if you just look at the aesthetics of that, we are competitive. And so, do you want to do this, or do you want me to take it? I'll do it. So the percent of students that aren't meeting expectations district-wide, which means, you know, those are the kids that are scoring ones on the assessment. That number has gone up in ELA, and it's gone up in math. That is the wrong direction to go in. It moved from 6.5% in 2018 to just slightly moving up to 6.84 in 2019, and then now it's at a 10% rate. In math, grew from 8%, went down to 6.29, which is where you want it to be, and then it more than doubled with the impact of the pandemic. So we're up to 13%. That's definitely heading in the wrong direction. Subgroups, we always provide a general, we always do a more in-depth analysis internally, and we track this more internally, but to keep it user-friendly, we broke it down into our special education students, our L-population, and our economically disadvantaged. And the bottom line is, is if you just look at the highlighted numbers on the right, students in ELA, special education students in ELA, dropped about 4.5% in math, roughly the same number, about 5%. The L-population, we don't know why yet, but the L-population increased by 13% and in math, 6%. So we're still with Lyndi, going to be doing some more in-depth analysis to understand why those were increases. One of the more disturbing aspects that we know the research talks about is the economically disadvantaged populations always seem to suffer the greatest losses, and that's true for our district. So the greatest impact on students with this pandemic, you can clearly see the greatest losses were students of poverty. Each year, we also provide a comparative analysis to our performance versus BVP. It is not in any way, shape, or form meant to, you know, put anyone or put any school on blast, so to speak, but we are, we do provide the analysis every year. In 15 and 16 in ELA, we were being outperformed by BVP, and since they're a neighboring district, we wanted to show it. 17 through 21, our performance in our district has been largely better. Same story in math. In math, 15 and 16, BVP was outperforming the Cumberland School Department. In 17, we took over, and the gap is widening. This is just another graphic to show you. Math is on top, ELA is on the bottom. You know, where the bars, BVP's line trajectory, to just see the direction that we're going in versus the charter. Okay, so you heard, I believe it was Deb and Kathy, talk about population size, and it is important to keep these things in mind. And I use this example to, as a precursor to the next slide, so it's important. We were 41% proficient in math. If we were to move just four percentage points next year and move our performance up to 45%, it would equate to, based on our population, we would need to move 83 students to achieve proficiency. Little Compton, their math proficiency was 4% higher this year, it was 45%. They have 144 students. For them to move 4% to nearly 50%, it would equate to only five students on their, you know, population to move kids. So we've got to keep that in mind. So what we also do is we try to predict rate of recovery. So what will be our predictive rate of recovery for the Cumberland School Department? In this particular case, we hope we're wrong, but I'll walk you through this slide as easily as I can. So in ELA, we lost 10% proficiency. We test about 2,000 kids, so you see 200 students. Rhode Island, RICAS decrease of 200 students in ELA. On the other side, you see the 14% proficiency for math. When you multiply that times our 2,000 students tested, you're looking at roughly 280 students that we lost in math, you know, during the pandemic, and 200 students in ELA. So then what we did was, we looked at our average proficiency growth each year. So what was the average growth? Sometimes more, sometimes less. We looked for patterns in our past performance, and we had about a 3% proficiency average growth per year in ELA, and about a 3.5 proficiency growth rate in math. So when you shake that out to those numbers, you get back to 61%, which is where we were in 2019 and 2025, and you get back to math, 55% in 2025. Right? So that's using historical data. It's using patterns of data and percentages that are relative to performance. So that's what we're projecting right now. Anything sooner than that, great, glad to be wrong. You also heard both Kathy and Deb talk about Tier Two and our focus on Tier Two students and why it's so important to have tiered systems. At the bottom, I'll orient you to where to look first. At the bottom, last, in 2019, we had 663 students across the district that required some type of Tier Two support. That number is now 770. Of the 770, 400 of those kids, that's why the, well, why are the middle schools highlighted? I'll explain it in a second. So 400, more than half of those kids come from two of our schools as opposed to the five elementary schools. So that's why we're focused on putting Essentials programs in at the middle schools, right? That's why we need the funding there, and we need those ELA Essentials and math Essentials teachers at the middle schools to support the volume of students. You say, well, what are you doing for Tier Two at the elementary schools? Well, the new curriculum, the new curricula is being put in place. So once the new curriculum is put in place, you can start to build systems of support around that. So you don't want to do one before the other. Math slide, math version, if you look at the bottom, was 801 students in 2019. We're now spiked to 913 students who require Tier Two supports across the district, according to our RICAS data. 500 of those students are at the middle school level. So when we talk about making database decisions, we just want to make sure that the committee understands that there are reasons why we make the choices we do in terms of investing our funds and how we try to target getting better. We're going to remain focused on outcomes. This is not a normal year. We talk about this all the time in our office. People think we're back to normal. You know, our principals are still, you know, really scampering to fill their, you know, they're doing a lot of contact tracing still. There's still a lot of students out of the, out of school, teachers in some instances. So it's not a normal year. We don't have all of our students all the time consistently, so we want to make sure that people understand that. But we are still focused on our outcomes, and we're going to continue to focus. We still take one course. For as long as, you know, I'm in this position, this office exists. I don't follow fads. We don't spend money on fads. We keep a very strict focus. What got us here the first time will get us here again. And we have one other little, if you want to call it a surprise. I'm sorry? Oh, yeah, I'm going to give you that too. Sorry.
So in addition to giving RICAS, we, every year, give the NGSA, which stands for the Next Generation Science Assessment. It is a grade-span assessment, so it's given to students in grade five, grade eight, and grade 11. So the first slide shows the elementary schools and the percent of students that met or exceeded standards. In elementary, it was 47%. And the next slide shows the middle schools, and the middle schools, and I plus wrote it down, but I don't have it, performed fourth. So that was a big increase from previous years, but to perform 56% proficient in science. And there's a highlight at the bottom. The number-one performing middle school in the state was North Cumberland Middle School. 69.4% of those students met or exceeded expectation. If you notice, the very top-performing district, Jamestown, Jamestown was 65%. So they were four percentage points above the top-performing district, so that was really remarkable. really remarkable. And then the high school was eighth in the state, which they made significant gains. I believe they were 24th two years ago when we gave the Next Generation Science Assessment. So overall, including grades 5, 8, and 11, and the data only includes schools that test all three grade levels. So for example, Jamestown's not included because Jamestown's students don't have a high school. Cumberland was fifth with 52.2% of students showing proficiency.
And that concludes this evening's Rycast report. Typically, at this point, we turn it over to you, Madam Chair, and for questions, we have many members of the team here.
Yeah, okay. Dr. Thornton?
Hi, Madam Chair, I have one comment and one question. First, our team, great job. It's not lost on me that Cumberland is a larger district with a good sample size, ELL, free lunch, you know, large district. And as you mentioned, you know, it is significant to move the needle for those many students. I'd also point out, it's interesting in that we're hearing next year, enrollment's going down across Rhode Island, except in a few districts, and one is Cumberland, we're one of the couple. Some quick data for you, December last year, this year, we're up 77 kids elementary from last year. High school, we're up 29 kids. So are the whole state's losing enrollment? A few places are gaining, and we're one of them. So Mr. Pignato, from a state aid standpoint, that's a good thing. Also, it's probably telling, I think, that, you know, things are doing, are working well here, so you're gaining students. That's really good, good to see. My question is, so a few months from now, if things are going well, what kinds of things might you see in the schools, or in the data, or in common assessments to tell you it's work, things are working? What kinds of like tells do you think you might see in the classroom, or in common assessment, or anything? As you kind of keep like doing pulse checks on the district, what are you looking for in like, say, March, April?
So we do benchmark testing, right? And even though it's only one measure, Shannon and Lindy compile and have data, spreadsheets, and these data pods, that they get all of this data, and we look for patterns. And if you're talking about the spring, what we do is, we look at historical data, and we'll look at our winter benchmark data specifically. That's a, that's a big one, to see where the kids are in the wintertime as compared to where they were in years past. And then we start to come up with coefficients to try and predict, based on that information, where kids will be in the spring. We do it one more time in the spring, and we look at patterns of students who have transferred skill performance to proficiency. And we take that information and we make predictions. When we did that for this year, we were off 2%. We hit ELA on the nose. Math dropped 2 more percent than we had predicted. So our common assessments, yes, we can track that, but we have to become more, more skilled at tracking internal data as a district.
Thank you.
Hi. Just a quick question. On Slide 28, your rate of recovery estimate, was that calculated with the additional supports in place and the additional essentials in place?
No, the calculations were just based on, because there's so many variables at play, even with the new programs in place, there are new teachers that have to understand our system, right, that are, that are getting used to our curriculum. So when you have those types of variables in place, when you, you can have spikes or losses, but at the end of the day, when it all averages out, you're probably still looking at, with all of those variables, the numbers that you see there.
Got it, thank you.
Okay.
So Mr. Demana, you know, I, this is my, I suppose, fifth year with you on your seven-year journey, and you never fail to impress in terms of staying true to looking at the data and making achievement-related decisions based on the data. And being able to, like you said, predict, you, within two or three percentage points, were able to predict where we might be today. And based off of that, decisions were made, how to spend our ESER 2 and 3 funding. And we've met and talked about what's in year one, what's in year two, what's in year three, what do we start losing as that money starts to go away? And one of the things that we've also done over the past couple of years is tried to have a real achievement focus on our budget, and look at what do we need to move forward?
Yes.
I suppose as part of our longer-term plan and our strategic planning is looking at how do we maintain the budget and the funding to continue? If it's, you know, four years to get us back to where we were in 2019, and we're talking about funding that's getting us-
Three years, max.
-three years, and preparing, you know, what do we have to do to prepare us to be able to be ready in year four from a funding perspective to continue the trajectory? And I think that's, you know, a real focus area of ours with Dr. Thornton, with the Fiscal Subcommittee, with the Town Council, with the mayor, of, you know, where do we want to be and how will we get there? But what you've proven over the past five years that I've been here and the seven years you've been doing this is that you are able to precisely pinpoint where do we need to invest in order to move ahead? And I think that is, you know, tremendous credibility that you've built, and we need to ensure that we all understand that so we can go into each of our budget cycles really looking at how can we continue this. That's more of a commentary than a question, but I think that's really, that's, of course, a critical piece of this. We can have all the great ideas of what we want to be able to do, but if we don't have the funding to be able to do that, then that's-
It'll create a problem, for sure.
But I just appreciate the work that you and your team have done because it makes it easier for us to see where do we need to focus? And I think that is really, really important. And thank you for being able to show that and hear tonight. And I know we'll have more discussions about this and get into more details, but I just wanted to thank you for that preciseness.
Thank you.
Let me just echo what Mrs. Freeman said, that, you know, these, these investments are evidence-based, and they've been proven. So these are good investments in the future. But I do have a question about the data that you're projecting over the four-year plan.
Yes, sir.
Would you say the 3% growth proficiency each year in ELA and 3.5% math is a conservative, you know, or so it's a safe guess, or it's not-
It's a safe guess. So data does inspire, you know, it took a pandemic to create a 10%, 14% drop. Typically, you know, each year, you see the two or three percent gains, 5% gains is a significant, statistically significant gain when you're talking about, you know, Rycast or standardized testing. So you typically will see between, I would say, 2% and 6%, right? So 3% and 3.5% is a safe amount that we should be able to attain with the resources we have each year. Anything above that, we'd be thrilled.
Yeah, so we'd be hoping for a March surprise, or-
Right.
Yeah, so that's good. So you're not, I do have, there's obviously a couple positives in there, too. So a 4% gain in ELA at Garvin.
Yes.
What do you attribute that to?
So Dr. Thornton and I, Dr. Thornton and I visited Michelle at Garvin earlier this week. We were visiting some math classrooms, doing some observations, and this topic came up. And I said, "If this comes up, what do you, what do you want me to say? What are you okay with me saying?" And, and she said, "Well, tell them exactly what we've talked about for the past few months." And she attributes it to having a building coach in her, in her building, and the ability of the building coach to get into the classrooms and do the things that she couldn't do during the pandemic, right? To make sure that teachers were getting the support that they needed, the pedagogy, and the, just being a presence, an academic presence for the teachers on a consistent basis. So she attributes a lot of that success to having an academic coach, which is why we chose to, Garvin as one of the schools, to have one.
Yeah, so I think that's another example of a good investment on the town and the district's part, so congratulations. And another positive would obviously be the science announcement. And what do you attribute that to? Is that something internal, or is-
The high school, unbelievable, extremely significant gains, and they're actually looking at more, better curriculum. Certainly Principal Costa and Melissa Kuzinitz will be looking at that, along with the Department Chair for Science, better curriculum at the, at the science level. But they, they focused on, in a quick conversation I had with the department chair, they had a more specific, strict focus, looking at what those assessments are looking for for students, and then tailoring their curriculum and their assessments around that. So it's just, you know, tailoring what they're doing and aligning it a little bit more closely to what, to what standardized testing and how they measure proficiency in science. As far as the elementary schools go, where the gains weren't as significant, they were more significant at the, at the middle school levels and high school level, simply because at the, at the secondary level during the pandemic, they have their own science teachers. At the elementary level, you know, we wanted them to focus on ELA and math, so the, you know, de facto content area that, you know, lost time was science.
So I think, you know, 18 months ago, I think we were all, you know, worrying about what this was going to do to student learning and stuff. So I do appreciate, I think everybody would share the same sentiment, that this is tough to hear, but it's honest, and we know where we are now, you know, and we have a plan and we know what we need to do. So thank you, everybody, for compiling the data and just giving us a clear picture and the whole town a clear picture of what needs to happen. We look forward to seeing this, and we'll keep our fingers crossed for a, you know, a March surprise.
Yeah, thank you. We, I do want to reiterate, I don't want to sound cliche, but we do have, we have hit our stride, I think, as a district with our administrators. Rachel works really closely with us, the principals, we talk. Shannon and I have been meeting with principals, having data meetings around Rycast data. Everybody is extremely aware, you know, and we work well together. And when we're talking about making decisions around, you know, resources, it's never done in isolation. It really is a team, a team effort here, and I'm proud to be a part of this administration.
Yeah, and to add on to what Mr. Collins was saying, there are bright spots, too. And I would love, and I know, we looked at the ELL results and, and the science results, and I think you said, maybe we're not quite sure how the ELL results got to where they got to, but I would love to, and I'm sure you would, too, learn more about that in these other bright spots that we have, to learn what was working well there that, you know, maybe we can learn from in other areas. But, yeah, that would, that would be good, too. And I know that we will, at a future Achievement Subcommittee meeting, spend more time getting into more detail on some of this, and as well as looking at the school improvement plans, you know, school by school, and understanding, you know, where they, where they need to move and focus their time.
Sure thing.
So that would be good. Mrs. Rogowski?
First, thank you so much for putting this all together. I, I know the amount of, I have an idea of the amount of work that goes into this. Couple of questions. I know that in the response to this, you're putting in halftime positions at Community and Cumberland Hill for math.
Yes.
How were those, how were those decided? I'm just looking at the gains and losses by the schools, and I see other schools with larger losses, and I'm wondering why Community and Cumberland Hill and not some of the other schools.
Yeah, we go a little bit deeper when we're talking about that, so it doesn't, it's not necessarily equated to the largest losses. It's equated to, a lot of times, that the population within a school that we see are, I don't want to say in danger, but are, are, you know, in the red, so to speak, that we have concerns about. So it's really, we go deeper. We don't stay, you know, at 30,000 feet and just look at that number and say, "Oh my goodness, this grade level." We go deeper and say, you know, we kind of foresee a little, few more students than we'd like to see at, you know, Cumberland Hill in math, so we got to get them more, more support. That's how we come up with those decisions. It's more granular.
Okay. And going off of that foreseeing, do you foresee kind of a U-shaped bottom for a while here, or do you think we're going to immediately go back up? Because the reality is, we're still dealing with, you know, students going out on distance learning, we're still dealing with economic hardships, we're still dealing with mental health issues. Is this going to, I'd love to see a 3% growth, and I hope that all of the ESER 3 funding and all of the positions are going to help, but realistically, is, do you think that we're going to be here for another year before we start to see those gains? Or do you think it's possible to get there this year?
Well, anything is statistically possible, but one thing I can tell you is that we did see these uncanny large losses in places we didn't anticipate would be there. So if we, if we can sort of neutralize those few large losses statistically, then I would say that a 2% to 3% gain, if we didn't get that as a district, I'd be extremely disappointed, even with the variables the way they are.
Okay. And just my last question. Looking at the rankings, and I don't know that another district really exists that does truly parallel us in terms of, you know, free and reduced lunch, in terms of our MLL students, in terms of our special needs and Tier 2, and all of that, I don't know. But compared to districts that do match us as closely as possible, did they see the same statistic drops that we did? Did they, I would be curious to, to see that information, just because I'm looking, for example, Little Compton, I don't think we compared 144 students.
North Kingston would be the closest.
Okay.
I do know, and the Assistant Superintendent in North Kingston and I, we do talk, I don't want to say frequently, but every, every six to eight weeks, we touch base at some point. And I do know that they made, they made gains, they surpassed us. I do know that they, they did get back to in-person instruction much more readily than we did. And, you know, a few months' worth of in-person instruction can make a huge, huge difference, right? Where we're still transitioning back, when kids were, we're bussing kids in to take Rycast, right? So that's not the best testing conditions to undergo.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Demana and your team, and we look forward to more discussions. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have two more items, really quick. First, in your packets, as per usual, we have the COVID-19 Positive Cases Report. For this today, I would just point you to the summary on page two. 27 new cases for students and two for the staff. Obviously, it's only December 9th. That is, you know, an uptick certainly, as you watch the news, you know, on TV. Certainly, we're mindful, we are seeing climbs. At the same time, we're also optimistic, more young students will be getting the vaccination. We do, on a monthly basis or thereabouts, get data from the state on percent of vaccination by school, so I am optimistic that will also increase, and also work with AMA and Cumberland to find ways to get more shots and more arms, so that's the-
And today, I think the FDA approved booster shots for 16 and 17-year-olds. They just approved that today.
That is correct, yes. And Madam Chair, the last item, just one more, oh, sorry.
If I could just ask, in your conversations with other superintendents and people at the state level, is there any concern about the Omicron variant affecting any sort of operation, school closures, any sort of changing? Specifically, masking policy seems to be re-approved once a month. Do you have any idea if there's any changes forthcoming regarding any of this?
Omicron hasn't been the concern. What's been the concern of administrators and nurses, I think, is this the workload of things like contact tracing. The committee may or may not know, as of tomorrow, the state no longer contact traces, they put it all in the laps of the school districts. So those are concerning districts.
So I'm sorry, if you could repeat that.
Sure.
The state is-
As of December 10th, the state no longer contact traces. They have a website, and they have the school personnel do that at work.
Is that only the state will no longer contact trace with schools, or there are not contact, contact tracing at all?
I can't speak for outside of the schools. I can just say from the school side, we are being asked to do all that tracing as of tomorrow.
Do we have the resources to do that?
No district has the resources to do that. The other piece I would give you would be the school construction update. Just some good news. If you haven't already seen it, we'll send you a video. We opened the preschool playground, or playground for Cumberland Hill. We had some large scissors and Principal- We had some large scissors, and Principal Malcolm over there cut the scissors, and the students had a great time on the playground, so it's open, and it, it's great to see construction, you know, coming to fruition and, you know, having something completed that was nice. Also, the HR business office area will be open, we think, end of December. Right now is the goal, so that's encouraging, that's moving right along. And the last piece, we will be picking up speed. As Cumberland Hill now is moving forward, we're also coming online next summer with three other projects simultaneously, Garvin, Community, and Ashton, all coming online. So, it's going to be really four projects, Cumberland Hill finishing, three more coming online. So, as busy as it is now, it'll get busier. But it's really, it's encouraging to see it. It's work that needs to be done, but it is going to get very busy with construction in Cumberland. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton. Next on the agenda is reports of standing committees. First is Fiscal Management Subcommittee update. Mr. Collins?
The Fiscal Management Subcommittee did not meet tonight, it was canceled. We did not have a quorum due to two absent members. So, we have payment of bills and a resolution that we're going to pull, just present before the committee for approval momentarily. Thank you.
Thank you. Policy and Procedures Subcommittee update. Mrs. Feather?
The Policy and Procedures Subcommittee did not meet this week.
We're going to be on a roll here. Achievement and Communications Subcommittee update. Achievement and Communications Subcommittee also did not meet this week, but is planning to meet the Tuesday before our first meeting in January. District Health and Wellness Subcommittee update. Mrs. Rogowski?
District Health and Wellness will meet on Tuesday with a very full agenda.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is comments from the public. If there's anyone from the public who would like to speak, you can come up to the microphone. I know. Yes, no, yes, no. Okay. All right, the next item on the agenda is new business. We had two votes on here, vote on CTA grievance 2021-2022-06 and vote on CTA grievance 2021-2022-07, but we actually don't need to take a vote tonight, those have been resolved. Okay. The next two items on the agenda are from our, typically from our Fiscal Subcommittee. I'll turn this over to you, Mr. Collins.
All right, we have one resolution. We've had several over the last couple of meetings, but only one tonight. Right now, I present SCPR-12-2021-89, a resolution authorizing and empowering the Cumberland School Committee to approve payment to Toronto Architects of Providence, Rhode Island for schematic design for Ashton Community Schools in an amount not to exceed $109,948.24. This is coming out of the $79 million bond. Is there anything you want to add, Mr. Pignano? So, yeah, so just- Fair enough. So, if there are no questions for Mr. Pignano, I would move passage of the resolution.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve SCPR-12-2189. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? The ayes have it, four to zero. Next is the discussion and our vote to approve payment of bills. Mr. Collins?
Yes, I have payment of bills. It is in the drive. We have payment of bills in the amount of $410,197.34. Is there anything anybody would like to pull out and ask Mr. Pignano about? If there are none, I would move passage of payment of bills in the amount of $410,197.34.
Mr. Collins makes a motion to approve payment of bills. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Feather, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Passes four to zero. Thank you, Mr. Collins. Next on the agenda is School Committee comments, School Liaison, Liaison Report, sorry. Any comments from the School Committee? Mr. Collins?
I will give everybody the customary happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, and Happy New Year in Kwanzaa, and even festive. But also, in seeing here, just looking across here, I also just want to thank all the building principals and administrators for being here tonight, not only for showing up tonight, but you have families, and you guys have, just like the teachers, have navigated during an incredibly difficult time. We constantly get emails from you, so thank you for taking all your time and for all you do, not only around the holidays, but just in general. It's very, it's very rare we get all of you at one of these meetings, so thank you very much. It's, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Collins. Well said. And the next item on the agenda is vote to go into executive session.
All set, Madam Chair.
We do not have executive session tonight, so the next item is adjourned. I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mrs. Rogowski? Second by Mrs. Feather, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? We are adjourned at 8:23 PM.